Motion, second comments, questions? Seeing none.
Schreger?
Yes.
Stages?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Mola?
Yes.
Motion to approve the statement of bills paid.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the payment of bills in the amount one hundred and forty-nine thousand four thirty-nine ninety-three. Second.
Comments, questions? See you, ma'am. Zach?
Schreger?
Yes.
Stages?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Mola?
Yes.
Before we go into comments on public, can you explain why I'm sitting here?
I was gonna say, Mayor McTaggart is actually in Washington DC. He went Saturday as president of the National League, uh, president of Kansas League municipalities. They participate with the National League of Cities, so he is up there with the, uh, the board from the National League Cities. I do know that there may be today, this evening, meeting of our congressional delegation, Kansas congressional delegation. I believe he's back the next day or something. So, in his absence, the county's president, H.J. Adams, gets to serve as chair.
Let's move on to comments from the public. Reminder, your name and, and your address, and you have three minutes.
Lang Cooper, 1535 South Ninety-Fourth Terrace. Tonight, uh, the next few minutes, I'd like to have a discussion if we could, uh, over our bi-monthly trash and sewer bills. We all got it a couple of weeks ago. Um, I had even opened up my inbox, but I got an email from my neighbor, and partially I'm here tonight to get an answer for her. So, we all got our bills, and according to the flyer, the charge is supposed to go at three percent. Hers has got a ten, mine's got a thirteen. So, is there a reason why this?
Uh, you're on sewer, so the, the three percent charge, uh, is referencing the unit charges. So, those increases above that three percent are likely related to your water usage. So, while the, the, uh-
Well, they, it's all related to your water usage.
Correct.
And, actually, I made a copy of the email, and I, uh, obviously, I don't really wanna use her name, but I wanna read some of this. It's a little concerning. She says, "We used a charge for three months, and then it changed to every other month, and now they tripled the bill." And that's true. If you do the math, mine's tripled. Okay. Uh, "I was concerned, and called both the city and BPU. It was explained that the city calculates our sewer usage on the amount of consumption recorded by the water distributor." And we all, we all understand this. Well, it doesn't work. My charge increased ten percent this month, although my consumption is identical to our consumption for the same months last year. It gets a little better. No one seems to want to listen, and says, "It is what it is." And that's just not acceptable. Uh, she goes on to say, "At this rate," and I think she's right, "we'll be paying an extra a thousand dollars a year for trash and sewer." Uh, when I moved in, it was sixty-six dollars every third month. After getting this email, opened up my bill, I've got it with me, it's now a hundred and nine. So, a hundred and nine times six is like six hundred plus dollars, and before it was a hundred and eighty. So, part of the reason I'm here tonight is to ask, what is the long-term plan to get our arms and legs around our sewer? And we can't do much about the water, but our sewer system, I don't know, do we have like a long-term, three-to-five-year plan on getting our arms and legs around the sewer system? 'Cause it seems like this really is just another tax, right? Uh, Jeff Bodie stands up here live and complains about taxes. We have like the highest levy in the county. We have the highest city levy in the county. On top of that, we're now paying a hundred bucks every other month, and it's really just another tax.
My opinion. Well, I, 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 I mean, not having backs is, it's hard to address. I, I'll say this, I mean, the trash is, is a fixed fee, so it doesn't change. I mean, it, at a monthly rate, so it, and I'm not sure what that, I think it's eighteen, something.
Okay. It's, I can tell you.
And it's, it's a fixed rate, so it doesn't change.
It's thirty-six, twenty-four every two months. And, and that's another, in the flyer, that also went up a few percentage points.
It did, yes. Garbage went up?
Yeah.
Because the contractor raised it five percent.
Is it five percent?
But I don't think we went up, we didn't go up a whole percentage.
Okay. Well, the, the trash really is the issue here, then.
Well, the sewer, and in sewer, I think it's important to answer this, is that, so, the residential sewer is set on a winter average, so the months of December, January, February-
February, right.
-water usage. So, whatever you use in water, then sets the base for the super year tier.
And it stays the same. That was where you're at. But she's in the same tier. I'm in the same tier, and mine went up thirteen percent.
Then it may get error in order to do so again.
Yeah, well, you couldn't, where, I don't know where you're getting information as far as what tier you're at, but Mike's correct, the water usage is calculated on the winter average, and then you're kind of assigned that base, that average for the rest of the year.
Well, and, and I, I think we all can understand that, but what's the future in this monthly, by, what's next? A bill every month for a hundred and twenty-five dollars? Most of us in this room live somewhere besides Edwardsville. This is the first place I've ever lived where you got a bill for trash and sewer separate from your taxes.
The, and a, what, real quick point clarification, when we did switch over to the bi-monthly billing, we took, uh, your, your bill from BPU-
BPU, yeah, I mean, that's all I-
-and then you were charged, because you should've been charged for sewer usage on that, on those bills.
Right. I mean, but that's not what she's upset about. She's-
I think it'd be good if, if you met with, Mike brought the bills in, because then you can see the exact numbers, work through the exact-
Well, I never got the, I got my bill with-
I understand, but this isn't the place to do the exact number.
I understand that too, but my concern is how many, I'm hoping it's just me and her who got this bill, 'cause the flyer said three percent, and that's, you know, it, it's just, it lends to concerned citizens, you know? Uh, the flyer, the flyer says three percent.
Maybe a little presentation at the next meeting about those sewer rates, and that way, maybe if she wanted to come or watch it online as well, that would be cleared up by then.
And, and the one, the one thought I'll leave here, which, which I've already mentioned, is it'd be nice if we had, and like a three-to-five-year plan on, and maybe I haven't been there when it's been presented, but we gotta get our arms and legs around the sewer system, 'cause I think it eats us up. The last audit, if you read those entry fund transfers, and Mike and I have talked about this, it's just, we need to drill down and get arms and legs around what we, and how we bid for it. Okay? Thanks.
We'd have to put something together, right, and show them.
Okay.
If anything were uncommon by going every other month, most places live on a monthly, some will, one's a- Yes, sir.
Rick Vane, one oh one oh nine Steel Road. I was just, uh, inquiring about the status of the, uh, quiet zone through Edwardsville. I was in a meeting in December, and they said they were gonna start working on that in the first of the year. Has anything, anything been done on that, or is it gonna happen?
You want me to answer?
Sure.
Uh, it, yes, it, it is going to happen.
I, I, I could, so, the, really, the holdup is the railroads, all the plans, everything's been submitted to the railroad.
We're awaiting the railroad to say they're going to, they do the railroad crossing part, and they have to put it into their process. So, initially, the plan was they build the crossings, and then the work outside the crossings, so the medians and the road work will be done after the crossings are in, and this is all being done by the UG. I think they have decided because of this delay, that we're going to move forward with the road improvements to, up to the railroad crossings first, and not hold up anymore on the railroad. And I believe that's what Commissioner Walters said at the last meeting. I had not heard that, but-
Do we have a timeline on any of that?
Uh, not that I, not one I wanna tell you that I could, I could, I, I can tell you relative to Fourth Street, and I know that, that doesn't affect you, we are doing improvements to Fourth Street in conjunction with that, uh, quiet zone, urban government, and we're in the process of getting temporary easements and those types of things.
Kind of street improvements that they have to deal with for that.
Well, mainly at the crossings, they have to put raised medians approximately a hundred feet either side of the, seventy-five to a hundred feet on either side of the crossing. In our case, they don't have to replace any of the gates, so the good thing is that, that would be very, uh, I think the red, but the railroad does have to expand some of the crosses, how long they are, and so only they, not that others couldn't, but only the railroad, that's that.
Okay. I just made sure we're still working on that.
Sure, yes, we are.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Your name and address, please.
My name is Carsten Mortensen, and I live at Lake Forest, and my subject is fifth-generation wireless communications that's being rolled out, uh, shorting to 5G. And I've been looking over the research, and I've emailed each of you from your email on the website, um, some information and some attachments that I think are very important. And I don't have time to read everything, but you have it, I can leave this with, uh, somebody. Um, I came up with some pictures of small cell towers, but basically, what's happening in the country is they're pushing 5G rollout across, uh, the whole country eventually. And there's legislation at the federal level and at the state level that encourages this, and also handcuffs cities, uh, from doing anything to stop it. Uh, the only, um, grounds on which you can stop it now are aesthetic, and they've limited cities' abilities to charge for work. For example, if they come in and say they want this pole moved, or something like that, there's a limit on how much, uh, they can, uh, you can, um, charge them. Um, and I have, my personal opinion and the opinion of many, many scientists who've looked at this, is that this is dangerous radiation coming out of these small cells. Because the band is different than 4G and RF and a few other things, it doesn't travel very far. And so, they have to put small cells, uh, maybe outside this podium, every ten houses or so. And it's basically a microwave oven that is shooting out in all directions. There have been studies on health, uh, issues, and it's, it's absolutely horrendous what's going on, pushing this out without looking at this. Um, so it's kind of late in the game, but to the extent that the cities can do something about it, I would encourage, uh, us to do that. Um, and, uh, I, the, the latest thing that I saw that horrifies me is because these red waves don't penetrate, they're not real strong, and they don't go very far, trees get in the way. So, they're going into these big cities and slicing down all trees along the main arteries. And my concern is also, do they have the right to come onto the easements on private property? Are they gonna be able to put them up in the woods anywhere they want? So, uh, this is very serious. Um, one of the pictures that I came up with here just purely by accident, the, this is some small cells up in the, in a, on a tower, and they made it look like a palm tree. And at the top of the, uh, of this picture, just happens to say that Trump's neighborhood will be exempt. Uh, Brussels, Belgium, head of the EU is also exempt. So, everybody's exempting themselves, but they're going to expose us to this radiation. And at the bottom of this one, it says, "Population projections in 2025, according to DEAL, Guide to Military Equipment in Civil Aviation, two-thirds-"
If we could refrain from reading it. I think there are a couple of people said that they have not received email.
Well, I, I just sent it out this afternoon.
Well, I received it, and I've actually viewed about fifteen minutes of-
Okay, this is not in what you, looking at. I just wanted to read this one.
If you could send that, that would be great, that, that gets, and, but basically, it says-
So, if, if, Mike, if you would, when you receive it, if you'd send it out from our email?
Sure, sure.
Because that could be a reason that we maybe, we didn't get, maybe my phone or my spam did, or whatever, because I just looked, just, I still haven't got it.
If you could say, if you want to send it to me, say, yeah, yeah.
If you could give me your email address?
Yeah, just in web, at Edwardsville KS.
I, I'm sure.
Okay, in web?
In web, yeah.
Okay. But the, the, on that DEAL projection, it says that in 2025, the US population's gonna be a hundred million, down from three hundred and twenty. How do they know that? What are they hiding? So-
Appreciate the information.
And the other thing, I'd like to, uh, thank you all, even though I'm not an Edwardsville resident, like, thank you all for, uh, serving our communities and all employees also. I've done employee, or volunteering and, and holding positions at the lake and other places, and it's a big job, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor, just, if, if, just-
Oh, I can leave this with-
Oh, thank you. A very brief, uh, I, I, I would concur that there's a great deal of, uh, in, in the car, I mean, as far as right-of-way of taking away local governments, local control of its own rights-of-way, been going on for a number of years. I know you all are all aware of that, uh, being generally taking, you know, opposed positions to those things, uh, not necessarily trying to stop, alter, acknowledge, but, uh, it's the people's property, and, I mean, no more than somebody wants something put in their front yard, and then things attached to it, the, the public is all in. I, I think we're also very fortunate that our, that our city attorney is very active in this space around, uh, legislation and legal issues at the state level. And so, we're fortunate she participates with a number of other city attorneys in that, in that area, so I think she's pretty well-versed. Uh, I mean, we appreciate the effort, but she's, she's probably one of the most well-versed people on this area of, of how right-of-way should be used, the rollouts of various technologies, uh, where, basically, we're not being given authority and, and-
We wrestled with this a couple of years ago, right?
And there's some current legislation, again, around this same thing, uh, and we can talk about that a little bit in the next week.
Okay, that would be, that would be good.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from the public? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Riley. I live at 1534 South Ninety-Fourth Terrace in Edwardsville, six-six-one-one-one. How's that?
Yeah.
Um, I have a concern, and it has to do with the trash and service, and this trash and sewer, uh, usage that we get billed every two months now. I'm just a little confused. I called, I talked to Heather, a couple of people, and got the understanding that we were billed, um, at first, when we went in the home, it was every three months, we were getting three months, and they were running about twenty-something dollars every three months. Now, it's running seventy dollars every two months. I'm just talking about the sewer usage. I also was told the way that you determine that is by BPU. We pay BPU our water, and they in turn give you our consumption level at the end, before December, January, and February, averaging it, and then it comes to us, and we pay that twenty-four ninety-five plus the three ninety-five. I, I understand all that. The problem is, mine went up almost ten percent, or ours went up ten percent, just, I just got a bill last week, week before, and it's gone up ten percent, and I cannot understand why. I went back to BPU, got all my bills from last year, matched them up with this year, they're identical for the amount of money that I pay every month, but yet, ours went up ten percent. I need to know why, and no one seems like they can tell me.
I would say, say, I mean, I, I, we don't have facts in front of us, but we'd be happy to meet with you, uh, maybe-
Please.
Go through your bills, we, we, we don't necessarily have, yeah, yeah, we'd be happy to meet with you, and we can sort of climb up and go through. We may have made an error. I, I, you know.
I've discussed it with neighbors, and they say the same thing, theirs went up, and they don't understand why. So, I think that this is a consensus.
More so than cross-checking just the bills that you've got, we'll be able to cross-check it with the data that BPU sent.
I have the BPU bills, I have your bill here, and I checked both of them, and it looks like every year now, we're paying four hundred and thirty dollars versus eighty-seven sixty, where we were paying, and now we're paying four hundred and thirty dollars.
Right. And again, some of that increase from twenty, from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen is the result of the city becoming the sewer, the bill agent for sewer, versus BPU becoming the bill agent for sewer, so there's, and we ran into some, uh, uh, unique circumstances around that, depending on addresses, um, which we, yeah, as Mike said, I've got your address, so we'll be able to kind of pull all the data that we receive from BPU, and then we can meet with you and kind of look at everything that we've got.
I would appreciate that.
That's the best way to do it, I mean, honestly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay.
Next item is to consider a resolution from 2020-01, authorizing the city manager into a lease purchase agreement with NHB Bank, Bank Midwest for financing of police department vehicles.
Ladies and gentlemen, to give you the background information, staff is recommending the adoption of Resolution 2020-01, authorizing the financing of two police vehicles and the accessory equipment, and, and this is a budgeted item, a budget for the 2020 budget. Uh, the all-in is ninety-one thousand zero four dollars, and by the time the financing interest is done, that'll be ninety-four thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. We recommend, we had three proposals, uh, this is one of twelve years we've done this, and now we're getting more and more people or institutions involved in, in this process, which is somewhat gives us an idea of the competition out there. But we recommend NBH Bank, which is Bank Midwest, came in with the, uh, the best interest rate, and the overall fees are lower. We think this is a good financing option for our police vehicles, and we recommend the adoption of 2020-01. Any questions for the chief?
Just for reference, what the resolution does is for clarity, uh, and often, I'll bring this to you early in the year, but it does two things. Number one is we're declaring this a qualified tax-exempt obligation, and if you recall, basically, to do that, you can't issue more than ten million dollars in any form of debt instruments that are given here, because last year, we had the Tiff District, even though it's not our debt, but it still counts against this, uh, so we, we don't have ten million dollars, uh, in debt obligations that are here. And then number two, basically authorize, as the city manager, to sign all the necessary lease documents that, to stack them like this, that they have to sign. So, that's the two things specifically.
Can we handle it in one motion?
Yes, but yeah, you can go in all in one motion.
I do have a question. Um, Charlie Mashenford?
Yes. Uh, they're part of the, uh, Mid-America Regional Council, uh, it's the fleet bid, there's another name to it, Mike's gonna, he's gonna change.
I just, I thought we talked about mentioning-
But, yes, this, every year, what they do is they call for the bids in the region, so they do all of that work, so we don't have to individually do it, and they're awarded to, Chevy gets a bid, Ford maybe have more than one, uh, but this, they are on that list, and we use them fairly regularly. We've gone to other places, and it's been terrible experiences, so we tend to stick with Chinese Ford. They take out all of our warranty work, we have a person we work with there all the time, so, and they are the best bidder.
Were there any bids from Wyandotte County?
Uh, not that I know of, no. I know in the past, there was one company that wanted to be involved, and then they made all the paperwork, but they then didn't go forward with it for whatever reason. I think there are some complications to it, and you've gotta be ready to sell vehicles at, for lower costs, few of us.
Are we retiring two vehicles?
Uh, we will be, yes, and what we typically do is we'll put those out for sale with all the equipment. So, we build our cars from the ground up. So, what we found in the past is trying to piecemeal those, we end up with lots of surplus equipment that do not fit on the next year's vehicles. That's pretty tough, so. We got lucky in a string of, but again, Ford has changed, you know, once again, the 2020 vehicle's not the same as the one in 2019, so, so we just made it a practice to do it this way. We build it from the ground up, and we try to sell them as-is every year, so, and we do fairly well. There was a time in two thousand and seven, that was some years ago, that we sold a fleet of vehicles for seven hundred dollars, and now, we average about fifteen thousand, so, yeah, we have a good turnaround, so.
What's the miles on the two that we're getting?
Um, today, I, I couldn't be accurate, but usually, those are three-year vehicles with about eighty-eight to ninety thousand. It just depends how many other vehicles have been down and had to triple up on vehicles, so the more officer you have driving, the more money, miles they get. Typically, between the eighty and a hundred thousand.
Does this get out of the special sales tax?
No.
It's just in the budget?
Yes. And to answer that question, the police department wasn't included in the special sales tax funds, so our only funding comes from the general fund, as, which is different than the fire department, who has both the special sales tax to get equipment and the general fund to compete on, so we have one fund.
Could I make a request, next time we go out for bids to include Wyandotte County, just-
I think they, I think they, they were part of the process, they didn't bid the-
Yeah, there was a, I think, I-
They were-
Five, three, four, it's really up to them. The dealerships are the ones who then participate in that program, and there are lots of dealerships, and there are lots of awards, and, uh, if, I would suspect the vehicles would cost much more had we, if we go that direction, without being on the bid. So, it's a upstate-
Just for pictures, we could, I mean, Wyandotte County serves us all very well.
So, we did that in the past, as well.
Okay. Thank you.
But they do, I, they do, so, the group is, so, it's actually, there's the purchasing agents that work for the various cities.
And I don't understand it, I, I just think you're going to get this.
So, each year, whoever the president of that organization is, their city actually is the bidder. So, the bidder could be Kansas City, Kansas, it could be Leitha, it's been Blue Springs, Independence, so they're in the metro area, and they put together bid specs for pretty much every type of vehicle, right, with police cars, vans-
Big truck.
Pickup truck, pickup truck, right, so they put it out as an overall, so, uh, dealer A may say, you know, and then they break it out, you know, you could, you could bid Dodge, Ford, Chevy, or I think they probably have Toyotas in there on some of those things, so, uh, you, if, if you're a Toyota dealer and you wanna bid these vehicles, you can, or Dodge, or, you know, like pickup trucks, you get pretty much bids from all three, and then generally, it's like, do I wanna buy a Dodge, a Ford, or a Chevy in, in that group? So, and some of the police cars, I mean, you'll have, you know, there's Dodge, police cars out there, there's, there's a Ford, I don't know if Chevy's much of the-
What that does is take away all of the effort to build a car and then ask a dealer to bid it, and everything, all of it, so they do all that, they work, so we don't have to go out there and get thirteen different bids or whatever, I mean, for one piece of car.
What's the bid cycle from March on that?
Say that again.
What's the bid cycle from March on that? Do you know what time of year they-
Oh, they generally, uh, they open, they, they do it in, uh, late summer, early fall, typically. What they try to do is, and, and, and we take advantage, so what, so what we do oftentimes is we buy, we buy the 2020s off the 2019 contract, because the contracts open until the new bid comes in, so then the new bid generally hits around September or October, but if you buy off that bid, oftentimes, they don't, they don't get those awards out till, say, January, and then you're, you're July or August for delivery of vehicles, so, but it's, it's the fall, kind of late summer, fall, that they put those bids out. And, I, we can give you a list of who already they've sent it to, and who responded, I mean, again, it's a pretty large, but we would be happy to get that if you feel like it.
Probably be available on March Wednesday.
It, it is, yes.
Do you want Mike sending that link out?
Nope, you can do that.
So, if anybody has any questions, we can, here, if we're able to.
You can do that, you can do that.
Thank you. If you vote for it.
Thank you.
Your motion for resolution 2020, comments?
Maybe you consider Resolution 20, 20-01, authorizing the city manager to enter a new lease purchase agreement with NHB Bank for financing police department vehicles.
Give me a second. Comments, questions? See you, Zach.
Schreger?
Yes.
Stages?
Yes.
Kayhart?
Yes.
Mola? Stain?
All right. Item number five, concerning the authorization of installation of street light at the entrance of Plaza West Commercial District.
And I don't know, yeah, we're in, okay. So, at the last council, we were, a question was raised about installation of, of a street light, where street lights, uh, basically, at the entrance to Plaza West, uh, what's his name? So, basically, at this location here, uh, that is their entrance that comes in, this is the crossover on the road, uh, so, uh, the pricing of it, as I put in here, is about fifteen dollars a month. Every team would come out, set a new pole, put a light on it, uh, come off the overhead wires down to the, to the new pole, and, and bill us with, with a light. I think the bigger question that, that I think we need to make sure of-
question that I think we need to make sure of and discuss is, so who should be the responsible party? And what should our lighting standards be? So as an example, I know this is an old photo, but this is Conoco, which is now the BP station, right? And they installed when they built a light here. And if you go by there today, you will see they have two lights on either side of the property. So it's considered basically parking lot lighting. And it's the responsibility, the property owner comes off their meters, and we don't have responsibility. Now, purposes of streetlights generally, I would say, are predominantly at intersections. So that the, that when you have traffic merging, crossing, that you have light there, allows you to see stop signs, allows you to see street signs. You will see them sometimes in the cul-de-sacs, or a dead-end street, or something like that. Again, so that you can see barricades, signs, crossings, things like that. The other area we see street lighting in is neighborhoods. So they want, when the neighborhood's built, they want to put streetlights in. We have streetlights there. Some neighborhoods want them, some don't. But that's done at the development time, not necessarily after the fact. Because, well, honestly, it's very expensive to do it after the fact. But if you do it at the front end, you get built into the lot price, the lot price gets built into the ultimate sales price. So obviously, if I'm a developer, I may not want to spend that money putting in streetlights. Others say, I want to put the streetlights in because people like to have that light and feel like it's an amenity in their neighborhood. So the question on something like, like this is, are we wanting to light an, this would be considered an arterial-based road or higher. So would we want to light our arterial breaks long-term, right? So if we want an Edmondsville Drive, K-32s, 98s, those types of streets that we consider kind of arterial collectors. We will be doing that up north as part of what we're doing with the Riverview Crossroads. It's what's being done on Building South Parkway. So it's, it's not unheard of in this process. It's what happens, from my standpoint, if we put a light here for, is it for the, you know, and the purpose is so if somebody's coming, it's easier to see this driveway. It's to potentially prevent an accident. I mean, we haven't, we don't have any data about accidents, there. But do we do which driveways? And I can tell you, in my time here, I mean, I've had rolls. That property generates zero income. So if you go to the tax roll, it's going to show zero. So then we go ten years down the road, and that property comes along the tax roll, and it's generating a hundred thousand dollars. So they're saying that's new revenue. What they don't give you credit for is the fifty thousand dollars you're no longer getting in pilots. So it's a disavantage to grow because, you know, pilots ended up, the whole tax evasion process has a purpose to it. But you're going to be penalized, so to speak, because they're going to show that all as new revenue, when in reality, it's not new revenue. Right? As it works today, that comes on the tax roll. It's considered new, so it doesn't, it doesn't really count as. And then next year, because it's been on the tax roll, it's part of your base. So your, your base does grow. It, it just has a lot of issues about what is the truthful part of that, that thing. How do you, how do you get put in? And the positive of it is that eliminates the tax limit. So the tax goes away, but let it require additional hearings and vote on the bill. It, it's, you know, it's one of those bills that on the surface of it's not so bad. It's the details that are still trying to be worked out. And it really has to do with new growth, you know, new properties come on, your annex property, and that's not our issue. For, obviously, I go annexing ten acres, all that property automatically hits you on your, that growth automatically hits you. So it's more fraught with the details than with the purpose of the legislation. Okay, you want me to tell you what the difference is between mill levy today and mill levy tomorrow based upon revenue? In my, my career, I've done that a lot of times. It's a formula. So the last bill was the one I sent.
Before we leave that one, there's also a communication portion of that that's really cumbersome, isn't it?
Yeah, well, that is part. So right now, what it says is, is that if you're going to, if that number is going to increase, and they changed up some of this. So originally, it was going to, you had to publish it in the county newspaper, which, then of course, nobody knew what the county newspaper was, that Waukegan County. But what it does require is that every taxpayer gets mailed a, this statement of this. It comes out of the county, but the taxing entity is the one required to pay for it. So now, you're spending money, additional dollars. And unless it's changed, if in our county, let's just say, the school district in the city, and Bonner Springs, and the KCK Light Brigade District were all having increases, those all have to be on separate days. So then the problem is, I have, I can't dock our budget till we have our hearing. So now we're pushed up against the deadline. So the fix is, we'll just move your public hearing date back. So now we're having a public hearing on taxes in May. I can't even figure what my budget is. I mean, we're, we're a year away. So that's the other part of it. That's, there have been some changes to it, but I'm not up to date on all of them. But it's a bill worth watching. And if you're talking to your legislators or something like that. It passed out of, passed out of Senate Committee, like thirty-two to eight, or passed the Senate thirty-two to eight. So pretty overwhelming. And then last one's the one I sent y'all on this House bill, House Bill 2656, and that's been 396. I mean, the summary of that is, the apportionment of county sales taxes would be eliminated. And we'd have to come up with about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for this stuff on these people's bills. And there are only two ways to do that. And I have sent testimony to them. I mean, that's the equivalent of about twelve mills. So you're going to braid your mill levy. And I know nobody wants to hear that, or, you know, come have that discussion, where you cut eight hundred thousand dollars out of, you know, your budget, and sixty, seventy percent of public safety. So you're talking people and stuff. Hopefully, that bill does not grow legs, but it was submitted in both houses almost at the same time. There's a hearing a week from Monday, or Thursday, or maybe it's Thursday, in both houses, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. And I understand it really originated from an individual. And there's some disagreement between that individual with the city, between the city and the county. So it was kind of a, started off with some city-county disagreement by somebody that either served on the county commission or the city commission, but it's not even a lighting official that's pursuing it. Anyway, that's one that really, of all of these, that one would worry me the most. If I had to pick the three, I'd put that one at the top of the list. And we, and we just be, I mean, KCK would take, I mean, I mean, yeah, the county's going to keep the money. And I don't have any doubt that the county has need. But KCK City gets a portion of it right now, too, at Bonner Springs and every other city, you know, around us throughout, you know, cities and counties. And you're basically, and they're not, you know, they're not going to take on doing the services that are being paid for today. So that's the critical part. So with that, that was really, I know more than normal, but these legislative issues have become a very hot topic here as we are past the first. So everything's been basically filed, so now starts going to the next house, and starts getting voted on, and things get passed. And it all happens really quick. So.
I can't remember who you sent that testimony to, Mike?
Uh, it went to both the Senate and House taxation committees.
I've done it.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, nothing of note, thanks.
We're good for fire. They, Chief, we didn't have to leave, but he did want to point out, and I wanted to thank the department. They did some controlled burning for some brush and dead leaves along the trail and at the parks. So he had some pictures for that. It was a pretty good operation. And I believe they brought in Bonner Springs, Fire Department Two, did some joint training related to this as well. So we definitely did both of those groups.
Where, this is in the park?
This is at the park.
Now, I'm at a baseball field, between, between it and the railroad tracks on that area. You know, but these pictures, one thing they give you is, you know, and this was controlled, right? So, I mean, we got people there, firemen. I mean, take that same, you know, train goes by, lights off the fire, along our parks, and now it's minutes, you know, before you get there. And that's ten times that size. I mean, these grass fires in this dry condition would be a problem.
Mother Nature took care of that today.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have to hopefully worry about any hot shots.
Public Works report?
Uh, I really don't have anything too new for y'all. Do you have anything for fire?
I'll just mention that the community college is sending their students right now. So we're having a lot of students. You see someone that is wearing a different shirt, typically it's red, that's a student. And then we've been spending a lot of time preparing for this coronavirus situation. So we're getting ahead of that with the city and unified government in Mark. So.
We're on a weekly update call that then is chairing the county host, so the various law enforcement, the local fire agencies are having this, you know, meetings held by emergency. But we participate in this call. So we kept up to that. And I think y'all probably have seen anything up to date, pretty much the news, what's going on in our public.
Twenty-four seven. Chris?
Just quickly about the public comments that were made about 5G. What he showed he was not a small cell wireless tower, that big tower, that was a cell tower. Some cities making, making it look like a tree, or a pine tree, or whatever. So that's not what we're talking about in this. With health concerns, in 2016, NCC has taken that away as an objection. So we cannot deny a permit for that based on health concerns. So they're taking that away. The concerns about these going on private property and the parks, and right now, it only applies to right away. They can't put it on our buildings or our parks unless we agree with it and say okay with this.
Can you put it on private?
They can, they can make an agreement with the private landowner. If they want to put a monopole in, or whatever it may be, or on the side of the building, they can do that. That's not what they're looking at doing right now. Right now, it's mostly on the top of street lights. We also make it clear, you can't put it on our intersection lights or anything like that in mutual intervals. And then we'll let you know that the UG legal is very involved in this, too, adamantly opposed, just so you know that.
Come on, there's a wonderful lot tonight. One thing that has come up in the last two weeks is a lot of, well, all of Wyandotte County got our appraisal evaluations in, and the market keeps going up. And so the taxes, or the appraisals and assessments keep going up. And so I just thought it would be a good time to maybe mention before we get into next year, because we already have budgets set for this year. But in planning for that, I think that just because the market goes up, doesn't necessarily mean spending needs to go up. And so I was just hoping we could maybe talk about trying to keep our spending maybe in the current year for next year, so it doesn't rise along with those values. And then maybe it would be less of a burden on our community. And I know that's everybody's goal. But I just thought, if we started talking about it now, it might be more effective in the planning as we, as we go through.
If I might just, so probably the next meeting or the one after that, because as we're talking about all this stuff, so debt, the debt side of the, of the equation. And of course, you know, we have to, we're in a issue-dish debt for Riverview Crossroads, because we don't pay for the engineering piece of it, right? But one of the things I've been working on is kind of some scenarios. So what happens, what happens if we grow this rate, this rate, this rate? How do the current IRVs, you know, as those things come back onto the tax rolls? You know, how does that impact that overall projections? And, and, you know, what sorts of gaps, one way or the other. But fundamentally, our debt is, at least, if we didn't issue any more debt, which is not realistic, right? We, we're kind of at the peak point, and then it drops off pretty rapidly. So one of the things is, you know, it's probably better if we keep it level. But that also, as that growth happens, I've been looking at from the debt side, that also potentially impacts in a positive way on the operations side, as, as how many dollars are there, and it gives us a better idea of what we're looking at. So looking at more from a longer term and not just an annual basis. So looking at from now to 2040 as an example. Hopefully, that'll help answers some of those questions.
Thank you, Council, for the streetlight. I've been wanting that for a long time. Sorry, I opened that camp.
No, no, no.
Maybe there should be something done for resolutions, or whatever you need to do to change the rules on that new conditions and all that. But I firmly believe that the proactive is something that we need to do, even if it costs some money. But I appreciate the support on that from all of you.
Couple of things. So if I remember correctly, you're going to maybe put a little something together for the next meeting in regards to the bills. I think that would be very helpful. I know there was several handful of my neighbors in Williamson Farms where, when it, when the change happened, and they about fell out of their chairs, because there were several that weren't even being built for this.
Yeah, they've never been paid for.
I think if you started from, you know, here, here's where it's happened. I mean, it might open people's eyes a little bit more. It is confusing. So I think, but I, I will say, and I think they're going, but it's hard to compare. Nobody's the same.
Right.
You know, water usage, I know everybody's houses, but maybe you'll look at something and find something. But anyway, I think that will be very helpful.
Yeah, we'll put something together for the council, and then.
We can, we can use, you know.
And even for those, like Carolyn said, who watch, or, you know, whatever the case, maybe I think it would be helpful.
My soul and Heather will get in contact with this, and kind of go tell the data to the council to make sure that everything.
If it was confusing or helpful, I did, I think the answer in the billing statement is good with all the information on there. I think that's very helpful. It may, may raise the, the numbers on the hot shot newsletter, or that, you know, that, if that's our piece of communication we can use, I think it's great. It's cheap. So whatever you can do to use that.
That's convinced that'll stay.
Absolutely.
Well, I have to put his line in there.
Exactly. Just to clear, the public works, there's going to be two.
The director is, is.
Right. I just wanted to be clear.
So we do public works. So here's what we've done. So we have the public works vacancy. The director is open. When Gary, who is public works maintenance worker.
Right.
He's working part-time.
Right.
But effectively, we fill his spot.
Oh, that has been.
That's Roger's spot. So it's filled. The spot we haven't technically filled is the building's in ground maintenance position.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
But effectively, Gary is working about twenty hours a week. And so, and we can use Mike. Old, like Mike's been doing a lot of the work at the parks right now. He's done some work at the cemetery. So we're, I'd like to get the director on board. And then I, I mean, we have candidates that have expressed interest for the addition. I think that hiring process will be relatively quick.
Quicker than directors.
And the chief left. Tim?
Yes.
I wanted to ask about the calls up to Bonner. During some calls, is that, is that increased from the last couple of years?
Yeah, I, they were using, one of the things we did, and I think it's, it's a good, good situation. On any time we have a structured fire, reported structured fire, right? So if it's a reported fire, right now, both departments will respond to that. So whether it's in our city or their city, it's a structured fire, we kind of get people. Now, we may get, you know, we may get there, our chief may get there, their chief may get there, and say, it's, you know, it's, it's nothing. And we'll cancel it.
When did that start?
We've been doing that about two years, actually, on the fire side. Now.
Looking for.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we've been working together for about two years on that. So I would call it an automatic dispatch agreement for every, so it's not every fire call. So it, it's a reported structured fire, right? Because that's what you need.
But I think in the thing of EMS.
This is just EMS. So we have been doing more calls for EMS than we probably have passed. I think the previous year, we did about twelve EMS calls.
Just kind of raise my eyebrows, just to hear my comments.
I, I think they were relying more on KCK to take calls for them, and their.
I think they were relying more on KCK to take calls for them and their, I think our relationships between our departments is probably just stronger. It's too small to make these. So.
So, curiously, it's a lot of wear and tear and gas for us.
It's an area we've had discussions about, right?
And it goes back, kind of comes back around to our canine.
Yeah.
Where you have to borrow something maybe.
Yeah.
Just.
They're making.
I didn't realize they called up.
They are making some changes. So, one of the things, and I don't know, you know, I'm going for, so in the past, the way they were structured and still somewhat are, is a volunteer fire department and a paid EMS department. So, in the past, they had an EMS director and I think six paramedics is the way they had it set up. And then the fire department was all volunteer, the volunteer chief. So, I think this year, they hired a full-time, I.
I believe it's deputy chief.
Deputy fire chief, deputy chief. And they're trying to consolidate into where their EMS people will also be firing. So, they could join, they could respond either way. And they're kind of in that transition process. So, I think the goal is to be more like us to where they have a full fire EMS department. Obviously, that costs money, right? And that's their decision.
Sure. They're a much bigger city.
But yeah, if you put it, I mean, they have, they have seven, I think, full-time peoples, what they've had.
And how many do we have?
We have fifteen, eighteen, seventeen, seventeen, including chief and deputy chief. Obviously, they.
It's just interesting. I've never really known all these numbers, but when I saw that.
And the chief and I talked about that right now. Now, I will say, if there is a, so if we respond for a call there and we transport the patient, we build the patient and we collect whatever that means, right? So, if they're insurance or whatever they are, we collect. If they don't pay, we go through our normal don't pay procedure. Is it possible we don't ever collect and transport somebody? Yes, it is. So, we treat it as if it's our own, we would treat it as if it's our own call.
Tracking specifically.
Everything.
How many bills are we collecting from? No, we're not.
I mean, we could.
Can we? Probably, yeah.
We know who we, we know who we bill.
Yeah. I mean, it wouldn't take a lot of effort to go back and find out.
Just curious. So, one more thing, the special tax.
Yes.
And I don't know when that we did put that together years ago. Why wasn't the police department in on that? It doesn't need to be answered tonight. I don't remember.
If, well, I can give you a quick, so originally, so it was the third time. So, the first time, we put it out there as a general, a half-cent general sales tax. So.
Just general.
Just a general sale tax, right? Because quite honestly, most of our, 70% of our budgets are police and fires that have worked.
Right.
Okay. That didn't pass. So, then we went out and we put one out that separated streets, public safety and, streets, public safety and parks. And that didn't pass. And then the committee that was put together felt like, and I think probably at the time, the fire department equipment, et cetera, was, you know, police department had good equipment, good stuff. The fire department had 1989 fire trucks, big ticket items. And the feeling was that there were probably more support to try to replace those things. So, we put those in there. In a perfect world, you would put public safety all together because, yeah, one year, it's just like we do now. We don't, we don't segment out those stuff. We don't say a third of it's fire, a third of it's park, and a third of it's streets. So, you know, when you buy a $700,000 fire truck, well, that took a big chomp. But, you know, but you're going to do a big parking for it. You know, so it differs each year how much we spend in a particular area.
It's all coming back to the same thing.
Couple of things. One is communication really is a problem in today's world. And a lot of our citizens probably that are making these comments are probably not that web savvy or just not a major part of life like it is with some of this. And so, it seems to me the only other avenue we have is billing state.
Yeah, we'll probably start moving forward, more towards when we have this a permanent paper, some kind of newsletter in the utility bill for that very purpose.
Yeah, I think it would be good. It'd be a nice, be a nice space to the public.
The challenge with print stuff, right, is data. I mean, right, because you print it and you get it and you send it and you're not going to send it again for two more months. And something happens three days before you send it out and it's already printed. I mean, it's the challenge. It's always, it's always been the challenge. Printing material is always more dated and electronic.
And we'll probably use it more for, because this is feedback we got from the parks plan that people, people who are in our program and really like our program is the people who don't even, aren't really conscious of what we got going on and we need to be reaching. And I think part of the steps to close that gap is going to be the utility bill.
Sure.
I forgot, I didn't. So, as we're getting closer to starting the time to mow.
Yes, sir.
And we're going to start mowing over trash again. I want to make sure that we're figuring out some way to get people. There's been many suggestions on my part of possibilities. And I would like to make sure that we look into that again this year.
Yes.
And regarding that, when, what's the date of the statewide plan?
The third Saturday in May. That was the eighteenth. Sixteen.
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 Playing on ring.
Well, we're not inviting.
No.
No, yes, you are.
I plan on doughnuts and pizza.
Is there anything different from past years that we're planning for this year?
I think we want to try to continue what we did last year, trying to.
If anything, I do kind of, we're kind of, we're going to be looking into maybe even expanding that garage sale concept and having some kind of like community rummage sale at the community center or something to kind of, I think we had good momentum and a lot of positive feedback from the garage sale at the portion and the donating portion that we want to make that more pronounced.
So, when would that next utility bill be coming out? We probably need to have that together. It'd be good to have that together.
That'll go out at the end of April. So, yeah, we'll, we typically have a utility insert that time of year anyway for that exact purpose.
Not to press you all, but whoever's making these comments, it'd be good to have that done, you know, in place.
Nothing further.
I'm chatting. I'm, I know.
At that point, whatever. I mean, you don't want money, you don't want money. So, that we, now you, now, I do want to look at, I mean, that doesn't actually.
Unless.
We've got a walk through that and we got.
I mentioned before, I said, I said, are you coming to Minnesota? I said, we have mosquitoes, ticks, spiders, and the coronavirus.
Make sure it goes.
Make sure it goes.
Make sure it goes.
The chief.
The chief.
I said.
Three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
I think he did. And I know I.
He made that.
He's doing the cops.
I do it, but.
All right.
Oh, it looks like there's a job.
So, they tell her traffic.
So, the truck, and it's actually.
It's a really shit. Go by.
I'll have like kind of a.
I don't know.
This first.
I think it's a little bit.
Well, I told you.
I think it's a little bit.
Well, I told you.
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 Oh, it looks like there's a job.
So, they tell her traffic.
So, the truck, and it's down and it's actually.
It's a really shit. Go by.
I'll have like kind of a.
I don't know.
This first.
I think it's a little bit.
Well, I told you.
I think it's a little bit.
Well, I told you.
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 That property generates zero income. So, if you go to the tax roll, it's going to show zero. So, then we go 10 years down the road and that property comes along the tax roll and it's generating $100,000. So, they're saying that's new revenue. What they don't give you credit for is the $50,000 you're no longer getting in pilots. So, it's a disavantage to grow because, you know, pilots, the whole tax evasion process has a purpose to it. But you're going to be penalized, so to speak, because they're going to show that all as new revenue, when in reality, it's not new revenue, right? As it works today, that comes on the tax roll. It's considered new. So, it doesn't, it doesn't really count as much. And then next year, because it's been on the tax roll, it's part of your base. So, your base does grow. It just has a lot of issues about what is the truthful part of that, that thing? How do you, how do you get put after? And the positive of it is that eliminates the tax limit. So, the tax limit goes away. But what it'll require is additional hearings and vote on the bill. It's, you know, it's one of those bills that on the surface of it's not so bad. It's the details that are still trying to be worked out. And it really has to do with new grow, you know, new properties come on, you annex property. I mean, that's not our issue. Obviously, I go ANXM 10 acres, all that property automatically hits you on your, under, you know, that growth automatically. So, it's more fraught with the details than with the purpose of the legislation. And, okay, you want me to tell you what the difference is between mill levy today and mill levy tomorrow based upon revenue? In my, my career, I've done that a lot of times. It's a formula. So, the last bill was the one I sent.
Before we leave that one, there's also a communication portion of that that's really cumbersome, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, that is part. So, right now, what it says is, is that if you're going to, if that number is going to increase, and they changed up some of this. So, originally, it was going to, you had to publish it in the county newspaper, which then, of course, nobody knew what the county newspaper was, but what it does require is that every taxpayer gets mailed a, this statement of this. It comes out of the county, but the taxing entity is the one required to pay for it. So, now, you're spending money, additional dollars. And unless it's changed, if in our county, let's just say, the school district and the city and Bonner Springs and the KCK Light Brigade District were all having increases, those all have to be on separate dates. So, then the problem is, I have, I can't adopt our budget till we have our hearing. So, now, we're pushed up against the deadline. So, the fix is, well, just move your public hearing day back. So, now, we're having a public hearing on taxes in May. I can't even figure what my budget is. I mean, we're a year away. So, that's the other part of it. That's, there've been some changes to it, but I'm not up to date on all of them. But it's a bill worth watching and if you're talking to your legislators or something like that. It passed out of, passed out of Senate Committee by 32 to eight, or passed the Senate 32 to eight. So, pretty overwhelming. And then last one's the one I sent y'all on this House bill, House Bill 2656 and S B 396. I mean, the summary of that is, the apportionment of county sales taxes would be eliminated and we'd have to come up with about $850,000 to pay for this stuff on these people. And there are only two ways to do that. And I had sent testimony to them. I mean, that's the equivalent of about 12 mills. So, you're either going to bridge your mill levy. And I know nobody wants to hear that or, you know, come have that discussion, or you cut $800,000 out of, you know, your budget and, you know, 60, 70% of public safety. So, you're talking people and stuff. Hopefully, that bill does not grow late, but it was submitted in both houses almost at the same time. There's a hearing a week from Monday or maybe it's Thursday in both houses, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. And I understand it really originated from an individual and there's some disagreement between that individual with the city, between the city and the county. So, it was kind of a, started off with some city-county disagreement by somebody that either served on the county commission or the city commission, but it's not even a liking official that's pursuing the bill. Anyway, that one was really, of all of these, that one would worry me the most. If I had to pick the three, I'd put that one at the top of the list. And we, and we just be, I mean, KCK would take, I mean, I mean, yeah, the county's going to keep the money and I don't have any doubt that the county has need. But KCK city gets a portion of it right now too, in Bonner Springs and every other city, you know, around us throughout, you know, S E County. And you're basically, and they're not, you know, they're not going to take on doing the services that are being paid for today. So, that's the critical part. So, with that, that was really, I know more than normal, but these legislative issues have become a very hot topic here actually, or past the first. So, everything's been basically filed. So, now, it starts going to the next house and it starts getting voted on and things get passed. And it all happens really quick. So.
I can't remember who you sent that testimony to, Mike.
It went to both the Senate and House taxation today.
Done it.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, nothing of note. Thanks.
For fire, they, chief would have had to leave, but he didn't want to point out. And I wanted to thank the department. They did some controlled burning for some brush and dead leaves along the trail and at the park. So, he had some pictures for that. It was a pretty good operation. And I believe they brought in Bonner Springs Fire Department too, kind of did some joint training related to this as well. So, that was definitely did both of those groups.
Where, this is at the park?
This is at the park.
Now, I'm at a baseball field behind, between it and the railroad tracks on that area. You know, but these pictures, one thing I'd give you is, you know, and this was controlled, right? So, I mean, we got people there, firemen. I mean, take that same, you know, train goes by, lights off the fire along our parks and now it's minutes, you know, before you get there. And that's 10 times that size. I mean, these grass fires in this dry condition would be a problem.
Mother Nature took care of that today.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have to hopefully worry about any hot shots.
For a while anyway. Public Works report?
I really don't have anything too new for you. Do you have anything for fire?
I'll just mention that the community college is sending their students right now. So, we're having a lot of students. You see someone that is wearing a different shirt, typically it's red, that's a student. And then we've been spending a lot of time preparing for this coronavirus situation. So, we're getting ahead of that with the city and unified government and Mark. So.
We're on a weekly update call that Ben is chairing for the county hospital, the various law enforcement, the national fire agencies are having this, you know, meetings held by emergency. But we participate in that as calls. We kept up to that. And I think y'all probably have seen everything up to date, pretty much the news, what's going on in our public.
Twenty-four seven.
Chris.
Just quickly about the public comments that were made about 5G. What he showed he was not a small cell wireless tower, that big tower, that was a cell tower. Some cities making it look like a tree or a pine tree or whatever. So, that's not what we're talking about in this. With health concerns, in 2016, N F C C has taken that away as an objection. So, we cannot deny a permit for that based on health concerns. So, they're taking that away. Um, the concerns about these going on private property and the parks and everything right now, it only applies to right away. They can't put it on our buildings or our parks unless we agree with it and say okay with this.
Can we put on private?
They can, they can make an agreement with the private landowner if they want to put a monopole in or whatever it may be or on the side of the building, they can do that. That's not what they're looking at doing right now. Right now it's mostly on the top of street lights. Um, we also make it clear you can't put it on our intersection lights or anything like that and mutual legals. Um, and then we'll let you know that the, the U G legal is very involved in this too, adamantly opposed, just so you know that.
Um, come on, there's a wonderful lot tonight. Um, one thing that has come up in the last two weeks is a lot of, well, all of Monnet County got our appraisal evaluations in and the market keeps going up. And so the taxes or the, the appraisals and assessments keep going up. And so I just thought it would be a good time to maybe mention before we get into, um, next year, because we already have budgets set for this year. But in planning for that, I think that just because the market goes up doesn't necessarily mean spending needs to go up. And so I was just hoping you could maybe talk about trying to keep our spending maybe in the current year for next year. So it doesn't rise along with those values and then maybe it would be less of an inversion on our community. And I know that's everybody's goal, but I just thought if we started talking about it now, it might be, um, more effective with the planning as we, as we go through.
If I might just, so it probably the next year or the one after that, because as we're talking about all this stuff, so debt, the debt side of the, of the equation. Uh, and of course, you know, we have to, we're going to issue additional debt for Berberview Crossroads because we don't pay the engineering piece of it, right? Uh, but one of the things I've been working on is kind of some scenarios. So what happens? What happens if we grow this rate, this rate, this rate? How do the current I R Es, you know, as those things come back onto the tax rolls? You know, how does that impact that overall projections and, and, you know, what sorts of the gaps one way or the other? But fundamentally, our debt is, at least if we didn't issue any more debt, which is a, which is not realistic, right? We, we, we're kind of at the peak point and then it drops off pretty rapidly. So one of the things is, you know, it's probably better if we keep it level. But that also is that growth happen. I've been looking at from the net side, that also potentially impacts in a positive way on the operations side. As, as how many dollars are there and, and gives us a better idea of what we're looking at. So looking at more from a longer term and not just an annual basis. So looking at from now to twenty-fourty as an example. Hopefully that'll help answer some of those issues.
Thank you, council, for the streetlight. I've been wanting that for a long time. Sorry, I opened that camp.
No, no, no.
But maybe there should be something done for resolutions or whatever you need to do to change the rules on the conditions and all that. And I firmly believe that the proactive is something that we need to do, even if it costs a lot of companies. But I appreciate the support on that from all of you.
Couple of things. So, um, if I remember correctly, you're going to maybe put a little something together or a next meeting in regards to the bills.
Circle.
I think that would be very helpful. I know there was several handful, uh, mine neighbors in Williamson Farms where when it, when the change happened. And they about fell out of their chairs because there were several that weren't even being milled for the.
Yeah, they never been paid for.
I, I think if you started from, you know, here, here's where it's happened. I mean, it might open people's eyes a little bit more. It is confusing. So I think, but I, I will say, and I think they're gone, but it's hard to compare. Nobody's the same.
Right.
You know, water usage, I know everybody's houses, but maybe you'll look at something and find something. But anyway, I think that will be very helpful.
Yeah, we'll put something together for the council and then.
We could, we could use, you know.
And even for those like Carolyn said, who, who watch or, you know, whatever the case, maybe I think it would be helpful.
Myself and, and Heather will, will get in contact with this right and kind of go tell the data to make sure that everything.
If it was confusing or helpful, I did, I think the answer in the billing statement is good with all the information on there. I, I think that's very helpful. It may, may raise the, the numbers on the hot shot newsletter or that, you know, that. If that's our piece of communication we can use, I, I think it's great. It's cheap. So whatever you can do to use that.
That's convincing, that'll stay.
Absolutely.
Well, I have to put his name in there.
Exactly. Um, just to clear, the public works, there's going to be two.
The, the, the director is, is interviewing.
So we're, we're doing.
Right. I, I just wanted to be clear.
So we're doing public works. So, so here's what we've done. So we have the public works vacancy. The director is open. When Gary, who is public works maintenance worker.
Right.
He's working part-time.
Right.
But effectively we fill his spot.
Oh, that has been.
That's Roger's spot. So it's filled. The spot we haven't technically filled is the buildings and ground maintenance position.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
But effectively Gary is working about twenty hours a week. And so, and we can use Mike. Oh, like Mike's been doing a lot of the work at the parks right now, has done some work at the cemetery. So we're. I'd like to get the director on board and then I, I mean, we have candidates that have expressed interest for getting a position. I think that hiring process will be relatively quicker than a director.
And the chief left. Tim.
Yes.
I wanted to ask about the calls up to Bonner during some calls. Is that, is that increased from the last couple of years?
Yeah, I, I, uh, they were using, I, you know, one of the things we did, and I think it's, it's a good, uh, good situation. On any time we have a structured fire, reported structured fire, right? So if it's a reported fire right now, both departments will respond to that. So whether it's in our city or their city, it's a structured fire, we kind of get people. Now, we may get, you know, we may get there, our chief may get there, their chief may get there and say, it's, you know, it's, it's nothing and we'll cancel it.
When did that start?
We've been doing that about two years now on the fire side.
Looking for Bonner and that?
Yeah, yeah. So we've been working together for about two years on that. So I would call it an, an automatic dispatch agreement for every, so it's not every fire court. So it, it, it's a reported structured fire. You get that for a unique.
But I think in the thing of EMS.
This is just EMS. So we have been doing more calls for EMS than we probably have passed. I think the previous year we did about twelve EMS calls.
Just kind of raised my eyebrows, just to hear my comments.
I, I think they were relying more on KCK to take calls for them and their, their. I think our relationships between our departments is probably just stronger, it's too small communities and so.
So curiously, it's a lot of wear and tear and gas for us.
It, it's, it's an area we've had discussions about, right?
And it goes back, kind of comes back around to our pain I.
Yeah.
Where you have to borrow something maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, just.
They're making, they are making.
I didn't realize they called up.
They are making some change. So, so one of the things, and I don't know, you know, I'm going for, so in the past, the way they were structured and still somewhat are. Is a volunteer fire department and a paid EMS department. So in the past, they had an EMS director and I think six paramedics is the way they had it set up. And then the bond, the fire department was all volunteer, the volunteer chief. So I think this year they hired a full-time, I, it's. A deputy deputy chief. Deputy fire chief, deputy chief. And they're trying to consolidate into where their, their EMS people will also be firing. So they could join, they could respond either way. And they're kind of in that transition process. So I think the goal is to be more like us to where they'll have a full fire EMS department. Obviously, that costs money, right? And that, that's their.
For sure. They're much bigger city.
But yeah, if you put it, I mean, if you put it, I mean, they have, they have seven, I think, full-time people is what they've had.
And how many do we have?
We have fifteen, uh, eighteen, seventeen, seventeen, including chief and deputy chief. But obviously they, they.
It's just interesting. I've, I've never really known all these numbers, but when I saw that.
And the chief and I talked about that, right now. Now, I will say, if there is a, so if we respond for a call there and we transport the patient, we, we bill the patient and we collect whatever that may be, right? So their insurance or whatever they are, we collect. If they don't pay, we go through our normal don't pay procedure. Is it possible we don't ever collect and transport somebody? Yes, it is. So we, we treat it as if it's our own, we would treat it as if it's our own call. Tracking.
Tracking specifically.
Everything.
How, how many bills are we collecting from? Uh, no, we're not.
I mean, we.
Can we? Probably, yeah.
We know who we, we know who we bill.
Yeah, I mean, it, it wouldn't take a lot of effort to go back and find out.
Just curious. So one more thing, um, the special tax.
Yes, special tax.
And I don't know when that we did put that together years ago. Why wasn't the police department in on that? It doesn't need to be answered tonight. I don't remember.
If, well, I, I can give you a quick, so originally, so it was the third time. So the first time we put it out there as a general, a half-cent general sales tax. So.
Just general.
Just a general sales tax, right? Because quite honestly, most of our, seventy percent of our equipment is police and fires that work.
Right.
That didn't pass. So then we went out and we put one out that separates streets, public safety and, uh, streets, public safety and parks. And that didn't pass. And then the committee that was put together felt like, and I think probably at the time, the fire department, equipment, et cetera, was. You know, police department had good equipment, good stuff. The fire department had nineteen eighty-nine fire trucks, big ticket items. And the feeling was that there was probably more support to try to replace those things. So we put those in there. In a perfect world, you would put public safety all together because, yeah, one year, it's just like we do now. We don't, we don't segment out those stuff. We don't say a third of it's fire, a third of it's park and a third of it's, is streets. So, you know, when you buy a seven hundred thousand dollar fire truck, well, that took a big chong, but, you know, but you're going to do a big parking improvement, you know? So it differs each year how much we spend in a particular area.
Yeah, it's all coming back. Thank you. Charlie?
Okay. Um, a couple of things. One is communication really is a problem in today's world. If, and a lot of our citizens probably that are making these comments are probably not that web savvy. Or just not a major part of life like it is with some of us. Uh, and so it seems to me the only other avenue we have is, is billing state. That's right.
Yeah, we'll probably start moving forward or more towards when we have this a permanent paper, some kind of newsletter in the E K building. For that, for that very.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good. It'd be, it'd be a nice, be a nice space to the public.
The challenge with print stuff, right, is data. I mean, right, because you print it, you get it and you send it and you're not going to send it in for two more months. And, and something happens three days before you send it out, but it's already printed. I mean, it's the challenge that's always, that's always been the challenge. Printing material is always more dated than electronic.
And we'll probably use it more for, because this is feedback we got from the parks plan that people, people who are in our program and really like our program. It's the people who don't even, are really conscious of what we got going on and we need to be reaching. And I think part of the steps to, to close that gap is going to be the utility billing inserts.
I forgot, I did. So as, uh, we're getting closer to starting the time to mow.
Yes, sir.
Um, and we're going to start mowing over trash again. I want to make sure that we're figuring out some way to get people. Um, there's been many suggestions on my part of, um, possibilities. And I would like to make sure that we, uh, look into that again this year.
Yes.
And regarding that, when? What's the date of the C Y plan?
The third Saturday in May, that was this the eighteenth.
Sixteen.
Fifteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Playing on ring.
Well, we're not inviting.
No.
No, yes, yes, we are there.
I'm playing on donuts and pizza.
Right? Is there anything different from past years that we're planning for this year?
I think we want to try to continue what we did last year trying to.
If anything, I do kind of, we're kind of, we're going to be looking into maybe even expanding that garage sale concept and then having some kind of like community rummage sale at the community center or something to kind of. I think we had good momentum and a lot of positive feedback from the garage sale at the portion and the donating portion that we, we want to make that more pronounced.
So when would that next utility bill be coming out? We probably need to have that together. Be good to add that together.
That'll go out at the end of April. So yeah, we'll, we'll make, we typically have a, a utility insert that time of year anyway for that exact purpose.
Not to press you all, but whoever's making these things, it'd be good to add that down, you know, in place.
Nothing further. Everything is.